UBSUDDR.LIVE's Local Government Live Streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Director Vasquez?
Here.
Director House?
Here.
Director Fier?
Yes.
Director Messick?
Here.
Director Bradford?
Here.
Director Matthews?
Director Bishop?
Okay, would you all please rise and join us for the Fledge of Allegiance?
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment. You gonna read that, Mandy, or you want me to?
I'll read it.
Okay.
Public comment is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board of Directors on any subject matter that is not on the meeting agenda as within this barred subject matter jurisdiction. Public comment periods are limited to three minutes per person and the total amount of time for public comment is 15 minutes. Persons participating by way of video conference or teleconference shall ensure their audio is muted at all times except when the board chair announces public comment periods. At those designated times, members of the public wishing to speak shall enable their audio and state their name for the record. When multiple members of the public wish to speak, the clerk will determine the order of speakers and announce their names accordingly. To ensure proper conduct, the board reserves the right to mute the audio and video of any member of the public violating generally accepted principles and decorum of official public meetings. We did not have any in-person or virtual public comments.
All right. Well, move on then. Consent items.
I'll move to approve.
Oh.
Second.
Andy moved to approve, Gary second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Okay. Discussion items. Receive informational updates on the progress with the UBA Feather Forecast Information Reservoir Operations. John James and Caitlin.
Ignore all this.
That's a quick presentation. Wow.
Okay, there we go. All right. Chairman Messick, Board, good morning. John James, Director of Resource Planning, and today we are receiving an informational update on our efforts with forecast-informed reservoir operations and the update to the New Bullards' Bar Water Control Manual and how those efforts relate to our ARC spillway. Today, we have the benefit of some special guest speakers that I've had the benefit of working with for the last probably five years or so. Dr. Marty Ralph is the leading expert in the industry on atmospheric rivers. He's led programs in NOAA for over two decades before he started the Center for Western Weather and Water Extremes, CW3, back in 2013. And Marty leads all the research and operations program associated with FERO talking about today. In addition, we have Rob Hartman. Rob was the hydrologist in charge of the California Nevada River Forecast Center, and he was part of the forecast during the 1997 flood events. And since then, he's been working with CW3 extensively on FERO programs throughout the state and will be able to provide his perspective on milestone that we have to report out for you as well. And then also want to acknowledge that Caitlin Chow, our Water Operations Project Manager, has done a really great job in the last 18 months stepping in and supporting both FERO and the Water Control Manual. So again, today, just a brief agenda. I'll do some introductory stuff. We'll talk about atmospheric river forecast improvements in our FERO program, do some historical kind of knowledge on the Water Control Manual at New Bullards' Bar, and our work with the Corps to update that document and its importance. And then we'll also talk about our forecast-coordinated operations, coordinated reservoir operations, lot of acronyms, program, the FCO program, which is really kind of the foundation for our FERO work that we've been doing lately. So wanted to take a moment here and review kind of the agency strategic plan that references our flood operations. And strategic priority number one, objective three, really calls out these integrated strategies to improve the flood risk reductions capabilities of New Bullards' Bar. So back in October of last year, you guys heard about our progress primarily on the design of the ARC spillway. And today, you're going to hear about the programs that we're looking to improve the operations to help best utilize that project. Again, as a background, the ARC spillway project is really a public safety project to advance the agency's flood control mission. It's an enhancement to existing infrastructure that protects previous investments in the downstream levees. And it's really the hardware element that enables us to actively operationalize FERO to its best capabilities for, again, flood risk reduction benefits. I bring this slide up. You may remember, we displayed this back in October. And this sort of shows the timeline of all of our planning efforts that went into our flood risk reduction program following the 1997 floods. And so, well, in addition to all the planning and all the levy work that we were going on, we actually started up the Forecast Coordinated Operations Program in 2005. And that partnership with DWR, the Army Corps, and the RFC was really focused on enhanced coordinating operations with Oroville and setting up a common decision support tool so that we could coordinate our operations downstream to make sure that we maintain the objective flows. And that program has been extremely successful, extremely successful partnership, and is still in practice today. And then building off that program, back in 2019, we started partnering with CW3D on UBA Feather FERO and really looking at atmospheric rivers. And these are the type of storms that cause all the historic flooding in our region and looking at potential new ways to operate our reservoir with those new and improved forecasts. So with that and more details on our program and our partnership, right now, I'd like to turn it over to Marty Ralph.
Thank you, John, and good morning, Board. Thank you for the chance to be here today and for the chance to work on this important project to support your operations. And thanks, Director Willsley, for your support as well. Let me just give a quick review on what Forecast-Informed Reservoir Operations is. This is from a definition developed within the American Meteorological Society. I'm going to read it word for word because a lot went into it. FERO is a reservoir operation strategy that better informs decisions to retain or release water by integrating additional flexibility in operation policies and rules with enhanced monitoring and improved weather and water forecasts. And the program manager for FERO and the Corps of Engineers is Dr. Kerry Talbot, and I'm the senior scientist essentially at this. A quick example of where we got to a few years ago is after starting this as a pilot study on the Russian River. For five years, we did the evaluation super careful, highly rigorous, and the Corps of Engineers asked our committee to request a deviation to actually try it in operations. And this is what happened on the left side. You see essentially an 18% increase of water going into the summer because in the middle of winter, when that black line went up is when an AR hit that watershed. And normally, the reservoir operator would have had to release the water down to where you see the red line in the February timeframe. But because of FERO, he could look ahead and see no ARs were coming. And ARs are the flood creating storms in this region of the world. So they kept the water day after day after day, and there was no more storm to refill the reservoir any further. So they ended up with enough water for something like 30,000 households per year because of this. And this was just a demonstration. And it was a drought year, their driest year on record. Couple of years later, it was a super wet year, and we see a very similar outcome with about a 13% increase in water going into the summer. And you can see the black line there went surging way over the top of the FERO pool. The FERO pool is that light gray shaded area in between the darker gray and the white above. And that big jump... Who's the pointer? Can you guys see the pointer?
Yes.
Okay. See this big jump here? That was the onslaught of nine ARs that took us from drought, serious drought, into a serious flood situation. And it encroached into the flood pool here substantially. The operator reduced it back to the top of the FERO pool and managed it with storms coming, pre-releasing to try to get rid of some of that water. Then the storm came and refilled, and they basically rode the FERO line up till the storm stopped. And that was a very successful year as well in a flood season. And it really brings people together to work on this in both the case of trying to enhance water supply, but also to release water ahead of a storm to potentially improve flood risk mitigation. That became the focus of the project here, and I'll expand on that. First of all, the key strategy in FERO is to develop a partnership between the local water agency, the Army Corps of Engineers, National Weather Service, RFC, and our center to innovate and evaluate. As a research center, we don't have a dog in the fight. We're just going to be independent as brokers and advance the science and respond to the needs of the operators and make sure we've got the scientific rigor and engineering rigor behind it. And because this system is a combination of Oroville and New Bullards' Bar, that attribute of having two dams was the first time in our FERO program that we had two dams being evaluated at the same time. So that was a Pathfinder role for your system here. And the basic schematic of what we do is shown here. Horizontal axis is 10 days prior on the left and five days after on the right, and storage is the vertical axis. And what we see here at the beginning, before any storm is predicted, we have the top of conservation in the middle here, that solid black line. Then we have this upward, this FERO space that goes above and below that. And what that allows us to do is carry the water, more water into the, at this time at the beginning. And then if the forecast comes, eventually, oh, there could be a big storm, there's time enough, a few days here, to release that water ahead of the storm, even into the conservation pool. Then the storm hits and actually approaches into the flood pool, but with a lower peak on the flood, both downstream and in the reservoir, the water levels in the reservoir. And then the operator can, pending the forecast ahead, release water and sort of ride the top of that FERO pool again. So you start with more water and you end up with less right before the storm. That absorbs the storm more, and then you end up with more than you would have had at the end, helping both water supply and flood control. This is the basic principle of FERO. And New Bullards' Bar and Oroville are the places where we're demonstrating this most thoroughly of anywhere. Those are the first two studies on Prado Dam in Southern California and Lake Mendocino are both really more about water supply reliability enhancement. This system is such flood, floods such a big deal here that it became the priority for the whole study. Well, how do we do this? We integrate forecasts into reservoir operations by trying to explore, you know, how long do we need to know ahead of time whether or not a storm's going to hit? And one of the earliest things we studied on this program was proving essentially that all the floods here are essentially atmospheric river generated storms. So it's like we can, in meteorology, boil down all the challenges to, let's make sure we get that storm type right. So our science, our observations, our models and all that is really tailored to that. Is there an AR coming or not? If so, how strong is it? Where's it going to hit? How long's it going to last? And what's the orientation going to be? Because that depends, that impacts on the mountains. So we do additional observations in the watershed, both for the scientific study to understand how the watershed's responding to the storms, but also to help with the models. And then we also fly aircraft offshore in the winter to improve the forecast of the storms. And we've created a weather model, a regional weather model that predicts ARs better than any other model in the world does. One of the unique attributes of the Sierras is there's really vital role of the snow level in a storm. So that's the level above which, when the storm's happening, the precipitation's falling as snow. So if you have a high snow level, what that means is more of your watershed's exposed to rain than snow. You're going to get a lot more flood risk in that. If it's a cold storm, as I'm sure you guys all know, it's going to be less of a floodmaker and good for water supply. But there's a lot of uncertainty. There's some uncertainty in that forecast of the snow level. I'll talk about that in a minute. Fundamental concept is better atmospheric river forecasts can yield greater flexibility to manage for both water supply and flood. This is driving, this basic fact with FERO is driving a revolution in meteorology, and we're on the pointy end of that. Let me just step you through as an example what happened last week. This was on the afternoon of Wednesday last week. We see, looking at the west coast here, the area here roughly outlined. And offshore, we see the atmospheric river out here. Particularly, the red and orange is the core of it, but there's strong water vapor transport towards the coast. The color here is essentially the cubic feet per second in the sky. It's like having the stream flow in your river on the ground, but instead, it's water vapor pushed by the wind. And you see the direction, the arrows are showing the direction of that water vapor transport. Here's the big low center up here, got the counterclockwise flow, but it's really, there's a, there's a strong AR embedded in that. Let's step through this very quickly. Six-hour chunks. Six hours later, it came into the UBA, stalled for about another six hours, lingered a bit. There was a secondary wave that just kept going. So this was a really classic AR. Then it ended up in Southern California, which was really a relief to a lot of, we had our driest starts, the water year down there, and this brought us back to a little better spot. Do you have a scale for atmospheric rivers now? Is it a big one or a small one? The colored dots on the coast designates the ranking we expect in the next week, the maximum ranking. You can see the three is a yellow there. And here's what we see for the inland transect. ARs dissipate a bit as they come inland, and we were expecting an AR1 here in some parts of the Sierras, including right here. Well, what actually happened? This is the forecast I just showed. And here's a forecast for 50 different ensemble members. Every, have you ever heard of the butterfly effect? The idea is you change the initial condition for the weather model a little bit, you can really change the forecast a lot. So if the temperature, wind, or pressure is a little bit different than the model thinks it is at the initial point when you start it, the forecast is going to be very different. We do that systematically. And this is an example where we do 50 different versions of that. Horizontal axis is time over three days, and the blue bars and green bars are when an AR starts and what its ranking is. This is about as confident an AR forecast as I've ever seen. Look how lined up that is. Every model member shows an AR1 or an AR2. The duration of it matters by about three hours plus or minus. That determines ultimately whether it was a one or a two. But what did it come in at? I'm sorry, this is a statistical version. So it's like a 40%, 35% chance of an AR2, 65% chance of an AR1. And here's what actually happened. I won't go through the diagram on the left. That box on the right, you see the A is just slightly in the blue box. It could have been in the green a little bit. It was just on the edge of reaching AR2 if it had lasted a couple hours longer here. So the forecast was about as accurate on the AR conditions as we ever see. Why is that happening? Well, I'll show you something about that in just a minute. Another thing we have is a set of tools that we've developed for the reservoir operators. They can use these to probe and water operators here, water can use and others. And I know John James is super familiar with this and leading user. Each watershed, we color fill with the amount of precipitation over the next 10 days. And you may have heard, there's a US model, that's the left one, and a European model, that's the right-hand one. And the right side diagram is the difference between them. Greens show the Europeans a little bit wetter, browns, the Europeans a little bit drier. And we don't know ahead of time which one's going to be right. So we listen, or we pay attention to the differences there. But this is a whole western view. Now, we're going to zoom in, and I'm going to show you what the prediction is for the catchment area above New Bullards' Bar Dam near system. And here's what the time series looks like over 10 days. This is a cumulative precipitation in inches predicted. And each of these different lines is a different forecast model. And notice how the storm is really hitting at the beginning here, three days or so. And the range of these different forecasts is really essentially five inches plus or minus, about an inch. But what actually happened in the watershed? Oh, this, we also have a way to show that in thousands of acre feet. And here we see all these different model forecasts, including our specialized one down here. We're showing about five inches plus or minus. And we can calculate how many acre feet that is, potential inflow if it all came as liquid, about 100,000 to 150,000 acre feet inflow into New Bullards' Bar over these two or three days or four days. What actually happened? That's the map of the rain gauges in the area. Here's a zoom in of it. And notice, there's some, like an erroneous one there. I'll those because they're so off. But here's 4.7, 5.2. You sort of get the idea. There's New Bullards' Bar. The watershed is up here that flows into New Bullards' Bar. So the forecast verified essentially is 4.5 to 5.2 inches. That is incredibly accurate. The normal skill for precipitation forecast in extreme events is much lower than this. ARs are the most predictable storm type in the US for extreme. The Sierra's anchor where it's going to happen, and the details of the AR, what determines what comes out. And we're years now into improving those forecasts. Let me skip over this one because it's a little bit complicated, but I described the snow level thing. Imagine you had a forecast and it says the snow level's going to be high, but it comes in low. This actual storm is lower snow level. So you're going to get less runoff into the watershed, into the dam, right? If the watershed, if you're anticipating a sort of cold storm, but it comes in warm, you're going to get a lot more liquid right away into the dam. And that's what's shown here schematically, that red area is a higher freezing level than predicted and lower freezing level than predicted. We want to go back for just one second to show you a sort of funky and cool thing here. This is the horizontal axis is distance from the central valley up to the crest of the Sierras in your watershed. And there's that sort of plateau part way up. It's a little bit of inflection point here. And this is the area that is vulnerable to if the forecast is here, but the storm comes in warmer, you're going to get all this area hitting, getting snow or getting rain instead of snow. Or if it comes in colder, this is the area that's going to get snow instead of rain. There are two reasons for the error. One is that the actual background freezing level, the zero degrees Celsius, 32 Fahrenheit level, is predicted incorrectly by a certain amount. On average, we know that error is about plus or minus 1,000 feet or 350 meters. But a weird thing happens in the Sierras and other mountains in the world. As the storm is going up the mountain, it cools the air, and it actually has, the snow level bends downward. If you're like facing from the central valley up to the mountains, looking up your basin, snow level, if you could see it, dips down as it gets higher in the mountains. So if you know what the snow level is upstream over the central valley, it doesn't necessarily tell you what exactly it's going to be in the watershed. Because there's three different processes I won't go into that control that, and they vary from storm to storm, this storm to storm. This is one of the research areas we're working on, what controls that. And that uncertainty can be up to 1,500 feet. So you combine these two sources of uncertainty, and that creates one of the sources of challenge for stream flow prediction, inflow prediction into the reservoir. Well, what did this storm look like? Complicated a tool to share. Too much on, I'll zoom in. This is your watershed. This is now looking out seven days, predicting three inches of rain, 66% of it is rain, 26% of it is snow, 7% is uncertain. But this range of lines here in the vertical shows the uncertainty in the forecast, like in the precipitation one, but it shows about 1,000-foot uncertainty in the predicted snow level. This is pretty typical. Remember, I said plus or minus 350 meters. That's what we're seeing in this. One of the things we're doing, and I'll come back to it in just a minute, I think I got the, yeah, I'm going to come back to this. Here we go. No, I'm going to do it there. So that one ended up coming in within plus or minus a few hundred feet of what was predicted when we measured the storms with radars we have here. And we're also working to improve the forecast of the snow level by bringing in, bringing in this machine learning or AI approach. There's way too much information on here. But let me just show this. The seven days, or no, five days going out. This is one day lead time, five days lead time. This is the scale. Let me go down here to the bottom one, the root mean square error. And what you see, the black line is without the machine learning. This is our state-of-the-art model, WRF. And when we add the machine learning approach to it, it reduces the error on average by 100 to 200 feet improvement in the snow level forecast. That translates to a better forecast of what the inflow's going to be in the reservoir. This is just, it's not even published yet. This is just a person in my group sent this to me yesterday, said, we just got this result out. And I thought it was so good to share it with you. Other thing we do, I mentioned, we fly aircraft offshore. I started this program with the National Weather Service OPI with me, Vijay Talapagada, who leads the global weather model for the National Weather Service. And we call it AR Recon, and we fly out with aircraft that exist in the US arsenal for weather reconnaissance because of hurricane. They already existed, and I basically asked, could we use them in the winter for this? Ask is a little bit silly, right? It was a complicated proposal and all that stuff. But fundamentally, they were available. And we've been doing this now for eight years, and it's working marvelously. And here's where we flew a few days before that storm I showed, I've been focusing on. And these dotted lines show the track of the aircraft that came out of Sacramento from May, the US Air Force C-130. And these dots are drop sounds that fall from the airplane. They measure temperature, pressure, moisture, wind very accurately, radio it back to the plane. The plane then, the satellite link sends the data in real time to a big data bucket that's used for all weather models in the world to drive the next forecast. We have a NOAA aircraft flying out of Hawaii, and that's these blue dots. Here you can see the AR that we were able to reach here. And this is an interesting precursor aspect to the AR that might have influenced its evolution. So we measured that as well. And then this was, the next day, we also measured with both aircraft. And by now, the AR was closer to the coast. And this is now, this one over here on the left is like four days before the storm hit, or three, three days before. This is about two days before. And pinning down the details of where that is offshore and how strong it is and the orientation and where the water vapor is, is critical to making the forecast of it right. It's pretty intuitive, right? You want to predict something, you want to know where it is when it's starting. All right. So I think I'm going to end with that and shift it over to Caitlin. So just to sum up there, this was a remarkably accurately predicted storm, and the accuracy built on emerged because of years of work in meteorology, partly with the support of UBA Water Agency. So really thank you for that. And the whole FERO program nationally is benefiting from some of these findings as well. Thank you.
Hi all. Just another reminder, my name is Caitlin Chow, the Water Operations Project Manager here at UBA Water Agency. Nice to be in front of you guys. And Marty talked about a lot of science, a lot of really amazing science. But if any of you guys blazed over, we don't expect our operators to look at these models. So how do we operationalize this? Well, this is where the UBA Feather FERO viability assessment comes in, where we try and put all of this really great science into what's actually going to go into this Water Control Manual that operators are then going to use in order to manage for flood risk reduction. And so we started this process of the FERO viability assessment, which ultimately takes all of that information, distills it down, and says what out of all of the science is best to use for all of our mission areas, such as reducing flood risk, and then potential water supply, water supply improvements, as well as climate resilience within specifically the UBA Feather watersheds. The assessment was completed in 2025 for at least the initial assessment. The final viability assessment is also supposed to be released this year where we drill down into into a lot more of the specific technical questions that arose from the preliminary viability assessment. And I mentioned the water control manual. Norah, I actually really appreciate all of the work that we're doing right now. I think we need to step back and really understand this is the water control manuals and Army Corps process. And so as part of this process, we have to deal with a lot of the Army Corps procedures involved in that. And just to appreciate the history of it, first we have to understand some terms. So New Bullards Bar Dam is known as a Section 7 reservoir, and that's from the Flood Control Act of 1944. A Section 7 reservoir is pretty much a reservoir that the Army Corps does not own. It's owned by a project owner. The Army Corps paid in to have some portion of the reservoir designated as flood control purposes. And the actual authority is that the Army Corps, because they paid into that flood control space, has the authority to determine the flood releases from the flood control space, that's that top level of the reservoir. But the project owner is ultimately responsible for the real-time operations and the use of the space below that flood control space known as the conservation space. So there's a shared ownership to these Section 7 reservoirs. And the way that that is outlined is through a water control manual. The water control manual includes a description and history of the project, information about the very specific nuances of each watershed, and then what's known as a water control plan. I know a lot of terms, but a water control plan describes how the project is to be operated to meet its authorized purposes according to the Corps. Part of this water control plan is what's known as a water control diagram. And this is an example for New Bullard Bar Water Control Diagram. You'll notice that the dates are on the X-axis and then the amount of flood reservation room space required by time of year is denoted both in the center with different axes on the left and right side. You'll notice that during the winter, when flood control, when flood risk is high, a larger amount of flood control space is required. Ultimately, the full space of 170,000 acre feet is required within the winter. And then as we hit into spring where flood risk is lowered ever so slightly, and then ultimately in the spring, when no flood reservation space is required, that diagram changes accordingly. Note that this is a very rigid diagram. The only variable that can control the amount of flood reservation space is going to be by calendar year. There is no regard to different variables such as hydrologic variability. So if we're in a drought where all of our rain or all of our water supply could come from one early storm, this doesn't care. This also doesn't care about any of the snow melt or any of the other science that we just talked about. It's only by calendar year or calendar month, I'm sorry. So some of the history that goes into the water control manual is that in 1966, when Bullards Bar was initially constructed, the Army Corps and Yuba Water Agency decided that 170,000 acre feet was adequate for the time for flood reservation space specifically. Soon after, the Army Corps purchased that flood conservation space for 11.5% of the total construction cost for New Bullards Bar reservoir, or approximately $13 million. Soon after, Lake Orville had a similar timeline. Lake Orville's Water Control Manual was actually published a little bit before Bullards Bar in 1970. And then New Bullards Bar Water Control Manual was published soon after in 1972. Note, Orville and Bullards Bar to this day still use those 1970 water control manuals, pretty much as written. Another thing that happened in between 1972 and 2005 is that in 1978, we actually had an operational agreement with the Army Corps to provide training to our operators about how to read and interpret the water controlled manual for real-time operations. And then also denoting that both Orville and Bullards Bar had shared control points downstream that ended up becoming increasingly important to look at. So after several flood events in 2005, the Forecast Coordinated Operations Agreement was signed for both the Department of Water Resources, Orville Operations, Yuba Water Agency, and the Army Corps of Engineers to better communicate and coordinate flood operations specifically for those downstream control points. Carrying on the FCO program into our current water control manual update, in 2018, after the Orville incident, the Army Corps received a large sum of money to update both Bullards Bar and Orville's Water Control Manual and to try and modernize them. Yuba Water began working with the Army Corps back in 2020. And this is when a lot of the FERO programs started, the pilot programs started to try and build up that science for what's going to eventually go into the water control manual. Same with the FERO pilot programs and the initial viability assessments. Something important to note about the way that we're doing our water control manual update is we're doing it in what's called a phased approach. So John James talked about the ARC spillway. Well, we wanted to make sure that by doing this major infrastructure improvement and doing this change in operations, we don't have to go through this entire process again. So we're doing a phased approach where we're going to look at the water control manual and see what is our current operations as is, what's our current operations, including FERO as the infrastructure is, and then what's going to be our mode of operations for when we have the forecast informed reservoir operations and the ARC spillway. That way it can seamlessly transition from one operational standard to the next. And we did this based off of the Army Corps process that they've accepted. And so we're doing all this work. We want to make sure we don't reiterate this every single time because it's a lot of money and it's a lot of time. And we wanted to just make sure that what we did made sense for the future because again, it's been over 50 years since the last water control manual update. And this is a really good and unique opportunity to make, to do something that makes sense for what we plan on doing in the, to the future. In 2024, the Army Corps held its first pre-NIPA process scoping meeting in Yuba City. And we anticipate that the NEPA process, the Army Corps' NEPA process will finish up in 2027 with the Army, with the water control manual following soon after. Okay, that was a lot of history. That was a lot of timelines and dates. But ultimately, the water control manual update process is a really, really great and unique opportunity to try and modernize a lot of our reservoir operations using that best available science that Marty was just talking about. It also reflects the changing states of our watershed and then also what we anticipate the planned physical change to our system might be, such as the ARC spillway. It considers resiliency for climates because it incorporates a lot of what might change event by event, season to season, year to year. And it of course builds off of our prior relationships with our partners, such as the FCO programs, such as all of the partners we've made with the FERO program as well. It also works collaboratively, collaboratively with the other local stakeholders in the area to ensure that the project continues to meet current and future needs of the community, as shown by a lot of the public NEPA processing. To further the read on a lot of the technical details that go into this water control manual and what was happening with the FERO viability assessment, I'm going to bring in Rob to talk about some of those key specific details.
Good morning. Pleasure to be here today. So thank you, Kaitlin.
And Marty.
John.
So as you can see here in this particular figure, what we're trying to achieve with the FERO program is improve our ability to keep the flows in the Lower River below critical levels. Nobody likes levee breaks. We've, we've had a couple of those, right? And associated with the 86 and 97 event, that's something that's of very high value. And so a lot of the efforts associated with the FERO program are wrapped around improving the capacity of Orville and New Bullards Bar to keep flows below critical levels in the Lower River. So as Caitlin said, we started the FCO program in 2005, maybe it was a little before that. I was honored to be a part of that with Kurt Dakens and Stu Townsley and Gary Bardini and David Ford. And there was a lot of thought put into, you know, how we can really improve communication across the reservoirs so that we can avoid spills and avoid discharges that are going to cause a problem for downstream residents. So and in this case, since that infrastructure already existed, that's a very good one, we really needed to engineer the FERO program to contribute to that. We're not looking to replace that. It's a contribution to that program. And the FCO program will persist when the FERO studies are complete and the water control manuals are updated. So I think Marty mentioned this earlier, flood risk reduction was the primary objective of the FERO project. It was the first time that that's done. It's harder to do this than it is to improve water supply reliability as we have in other projects. But why is that? That's true because these, these water control manuals and the way that these were set up were already engineered to be able to handle big events, right? So now you want to handle something bigger or you want to handle it better. There's really only two ways to handle bigger and better events, better, bigger, worse events. That is to get more water out of the system. And to do that, in many cases, you have to change the infrastructure. And we're being proposed for New Bullards Bar. We saw that same sort of application for Folsom Dam with the construction of the auxiliary spillway for that project. The notion behind, behind FERO is that, well, and Caitlin said, the water control manuals were published in 1970, 1972. You think the forecasts have gotten any better since then? Just a little. They've gotten a lot better. And so, and it wasn't inappropriate to assume that there was almost no forecast skill in the early 70s. And so as a result, those manuals were engineered to pretty, to ignore the forecast. Well, ignoring the forecast today is foolishness because we can see out in the Pacific, things that are going on, we can see atmospheric rivers forming, we need to take advantage of that information, either release or to store water appropriately. So this is just good stewardship of resources to take advantage of, of the forecast skill, which is getting better and better all the time. So again, I think we've covered these, these points adequately. Marty covered this slide as well, so I won't go through this again. But again, but the whole idea is keep more water before the storm. When you see something coming, we release that water perhaps into the conservation space and fill it back up. And then you end the storm with more water than you would have otherwise had with the existing water control manual. So we've talked about this FERO viability assessment. And I want you to get a sense of what it really involves. And it's not just doing engineering studies to show that we can manage the reservoir better. It's really more, a lot more holistic. And so you can see the elements scattered around the outside of this goal to improve situational awareness and forecast skill. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to improve the information and the awareness of the reservoir operators that are going to be making decisions about releasing water, how much water and when, right? It's not a prescriptive operation where a black box where you say, well, if this happens, you've got to do that, right? We're trying to improve the information that the reservoir operators have. So what are the components of that? So observations, Marty talked a little bit about that, releasing balloons, collecting more information in the watershed. What's the soil moisture? Are there additional precipitation gauges that are needed? With the FCO program, there was an emphasis on this as well. And there were a number of new gauges that were brought into the Yuba and Feather watersheds to help with that. Lot of work done on meteorology, improving the skill and the understanding of atmospheric rivers and, and freezing levels and all that. And how that information then flows into the hydrology and how we're going to, what's the runoff going to look like? And then part of this is understanding the forecasts. How good are they? Under what conditions? Where do we need to be focusing attention to improve the skill in those forecasts going forward? Then of course, communications, you know, how do we, how do we talk about what we're doing and help people to understand that this is making things better and what the, and that the investments are worth that? And finally, or not finally, but decision support. So again, how do we create the tools that the operators need to make informed decisions, better decisions than they would otherwise be able to? And then finally, we have to do some water, we get to do some water resources engineering to demonstrate how all of these other components can apply and help us manage the storage in the reservoir more effectively. So we did a whole ton of analysis, mainly focused on how do we, how do we process these 19, the, the big events, 1986, 1997? I'm sure you all know that those were a problem, right? Those were very challenging events. I was managing the River Forecast Center here in 1997 when that occurred. I was working at the Northwest River Forecast Center in Portland for the 1986 event. So these are very familiar for me. You look along the left margin, you see a series of objectives and they're either related to the reservoir themselves in terms of how much water is stored or if the maximum release is, or releases are limited to the maximum. And then there are criteria or objectives associated with the Feather at Yuba City or the Yuba at Marysville, and then the Confluence flows for the Feather below the Confluence with the Yuba and the Feather below the Confluence with the Bear. And you can see what those numbers are. So there's a whole series of numbers in here. We tried to, it's really difficult to summarize all of the analysis that we did. We tried to do that in a single chart and I apologize that it's not obviously clear. But if you look at the numbers in here, these are scaling factors of the 86 and 97 event. And so if it was just 100 in any of these boxes, that means that you could only achieve those objectives on the left if at 100%. But then we were able to scale those events up bigger, right? More precipitation than we actually occurred in those events. And then the numbers reflect how big it can get before it exceeds our objectives. So if you look at the very top row, and we're just looking at the gross pool at Orville, you could take for the 86 event, you could ratchet that up to 116% of what was actually observed for this baseline operation, which is what's in the water control manual. And the E on the end of that means that there's no ARC spillway. Then for these FERO alternatives designated as ID 3A and ID 4A, two different, slightly different approaches to that. The A means that the ARC spillway is in place and they're able to handle a slightly larger scaling of those events. So you can look through this chart and you can get an idea of how well they performed relative to those two events and the objectives along the left-hand side. So the lighter green is not as good and the darker green is a little better. So we're going to look at some details of these scaling events because that's just, you know, a chart that is probably oversummarized. It's good to look at how one of these might work out. So we're going to specifically look at New Bullards Bar and 116% of the 1986 event. So if you were here for the 86 event, if 116% of that would be terrorized, I mean, or you know, it would be a pretty scary thing to go through. So let's see if I can get the mouse to work. So we're starting off, Marty described this FERO space and the ability to operate, make decisions within that. Caitlin talked about the rule curve and that if you're above top of conservation, the Corps of Engineers has the authority to dictate what the releases will be. And below that, Yuba Water would have that. The idea is that prior to the storm, we're riding along this, the top of the FERO space in, in the alternative, the FERO alternatives. And then for the water control manual process, we're right at the top of the, bottom of the, of the flood space, top of conservation, but more water between the event here, right? And then as the storm is beginning to be forecast, then these FERO alternatives draw down the storage in the event. And so, you know, we saw the chart that Marty presented, that was a cartoon. This is not a cartoon, right? This is actual modeling of the system. And so we can see, looking at the forecasts, the heincasts that were created for this specific event, these are real forecasts. We're not using observations. We're using forecasts to pull the reservoir down with this, these configured FERO alternatives. And then as the storm hits, our peak reservoir in New Bullards Bar is reduced. That's great, right? That's what we want to do. So we've done, we've had more water before the event. done, we've had more water before the event. We've had less water right before the event. So that's taking advantage of the forecast. And then at the end of the event, the storage is higher. So it's like everybody wins, hopefully, because, you know, more water is good when you need it, less water is good when you don't want it, right? So if we then look at what the reservoir releases are associated with that, we can see this pre-release for the FERO alternatives several days before the event hits. And you can see that, you know, we avoid a higher than the 50,000 maximum release that we're, that we want to see come out of New Bullards Bar. And in addition, the flows for the FERO alternatives are able to be cut back sooner. We know that part of the levee fragility is associated with extended period of high flows on the levees. We want to, we want to get those back down as quickly as possible to avoid problems. So again, increased releases before the event, lower peak release and faster reduction of those high releases. So we saw in that chart, the ability, the FERO alternatives resulted in less storage in the reservoir. But what if we want to use that storage to reduce the peak flows downstream, right? So the actual reservoir models themselves are fixated on meeting that target, but not necessarily keeping under it. So we need procedures that allow us to transfer that benefit from reservoir storage to the downstream locations because that's really what we are probably more care about. We don't want to break levees. We want to use the reservoirs for what they're intended. And if they can keep the stages lower in the lower river, then that's what we would want to do. So we did a demonstration of that in this case with 100% scaling of the 1986 event. So you can see here, we started off higher than the water control manual procedures. And this was only done for ID 3A, one of the two alternatives that we analyzed in the report. So you can see, big storage reduction prior to the event. And then we have a whole bunch of different scenarios where we're changing the target flow for below the Confluence of the Yuba and the Feather Rivers from, and below the Bear from 300, 320, clear down to 210 and 230. That's quite a reduction, 30% reduction in the flows. We can do that by allowing the storage in the reservoir to be higher, but no higher than, than the water control manual update. My voice seems to be going sideways. So probably sounds funnier to me than you. But so we got greater stories, lower downstream targets. And if we look at the releases from the reservoir, again, you can see this big pre-release. Then we see that there's, there's a lot of noise in the releases from New Bullards Bar. And why do you think that might be? Because the, the middle and south Yuba are contributing a lot of flow and it's quite variable, right? During this storm event. So the, the water control plans, the FERO water control plans need to be on top of that and need to be reactive to those changes in the uncontrolled flow below New Bullards Bar and above Marysville. So you see quite a bit of noise there. But yeah, you know, the peak flows from the reservoir are no higher than they are with the baseline. And with that, let's see, am I trans, is it back to you Caitlin or is John? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for taking the time today to listen to our update. I guess what I ought to conclude on is that this chart here really shows that these are a really progressive operational improvement program that the agency sat out to implement after the 1997 floods. And so we're really excited to now integrate FERO into the water control manual update. We'll be working with our core partners on that. And really, none of these efforts would be possible without the relationships and the partnerships that we've been building these many years with folks like Rob and Marty. And I just want to thank them for their leadership in these programs and for supporting this presentation today. So with that, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Any of the board members have questions?
Through the chair. I just wanted to say thank you guys for the work you're doing on the flood risk reduction and improving forecasting and partnering with everybody in the region. It's a huge task and it's greatly appreciated.
Through the chair.
No question, just similar comments. So thank you. Great presentation. I really enjoyed the details of how the forecasts are being improved and also the specific impacts to elevation of the reservoir and the downstream flow with this fully implemented, so.
I would like to also comment that in history, when we, you saw the urban there were, the manager decreased the flow out of Bullards to let the Middle Fork and the South Fork come out and then actually encroached, I believe, even over the anticipated flood to level the stream out. And he, as I remember, put together a film that detailed all that. It might be good to find that film and review it for all the current board that showed how, even though we didn't have the forecasted tools we have now, they were able to take the peak off of the Yuba River at Marysville by holding Bullards Bar back, letting that Middle Fork and South Fork come out. I think showing that film again would help everybody's understanding how we use the tools that we're now talking about in a prior flood.
Thank you. Wayne?
So I have a couple of comments and questions. One is, I took a hydrology class myself 35 years ago, I guess, in college. And so I'm struck by how, how much we've advanced, you know, in that timeframe, let alone back to 1972 when our manual was written. And I just, I'm struck by how lucky we are to have this team of people, you know, you four and all the staff that, that work for you, working on, you know, things that are lifesaving the work you're doing. I fully expect will save lives in the future. So I'm struck by that. My question is, so you just showed us this most recent forecast and how incredibly accurate that was. In, in the next five years, say, do you, do you expect the science that you're doing to say, help you be that, that accurate more often? Or will we get more days warning? Or how will, how will it improve?
Yeah, great question. And I showed the flights that we do offshore out of Hawaii and out of California. The storms largely come from west to east in the winter. I imagine most people see that in everyday life. The farther west we can get to collect that data, the farther out in time ahead of a storm hitting here, we can see and help make this forecast better. In an effort to develop that method, this year, for the first time ever, the Air Force took two C-130s to Japan under our direction, flew for 10 days successfully. And we're now going to be analyzing the impact of those data on the forecast skill. Our hope is that that gets us a couple more days lead time improvement as we go forward. Secondly, semi crazy, if not at least ambitious idea is that the European community is interested in ARs as well now in the weather business and a lot of different. And there's an experiment there a year from now that will fly out of Ireland over to the west, over the Atlantic. And, and they want to try to sample the AR there. I'm a scientist on that team as well. And we're going to coordinate it with what we're doing in the Pacific. And today, there's a flight in the Gulf of Mexico to help with an east coast storm that could benefit. So the meteorological community is coming together around now, the idea of in addition to the satellites, which are super important for forecast ability, but still have serious gaps, they could do. We're going to try to fly five different storms in the northern hemisphere at the same time in February 2026, three or four days, to see if we can actually improve the week two lead time. Week two would be groundbreaking. And it could do that because all this weather information flows around the planet. In time, it comes back potentially to help the forecast here. Processes and modeling and turbulence and various, for various modeling reasons, adding the new data now, it only lasts a few days in terms of its impact typically. So there's a lot of modeling work to do. Probably a longer answer than you wanted, but there's a, the meteorology community has turned on to Western water management now in a way it has never been prior in my career. There is a lot of energy. Help people like yourselves, Willie and John, you guys, to manage the challenges that nature provides to help.
Follow up question to that, considering what's going on in our federal government now, are you concerned about funding going forward? Do we know anything yet?
I'm taking a pragmatic approach that most of that is way above my pay grade. And I'd prefer not to speculate. But everybody in the weather business is paying close attention to the decisions that are made because the systems that we depend on to make the forecasts I just showed are really incredible, incredibly important for our nation's well-being, for managing water here, for storm types, et cetera. So I'm by my nature an optimist and hopeful that the concerns that are being considered and actions taken will be given due diligence and impacts of the information that's provided and recognized.
And last question. I was just doing rough math in my head. I'm guessing maybe when, if we have the arc spillway in place, we might see a storm coming and want to get rid of 200,000 acre feet. Is it, is it possible it would be that much? And how many days would it take to get rid of that?
To defer to.
And I'm thinking back to 86, that happened in March. So leading up to that, we, we would have wanted to, to keep back as much water, right, as we could.
Yeah. So I think depending on the, the lead time and the confidence in the forecast, you know, you're probably looking at releasing water, you know, five to seven days out. And because you have the arc spillway, you have a lot of capacity to do that, even at lower levels of the reservoir. So, you know, 35,000 CFS times two, 70,000 a day. So that gives you, evacuate a lot of water.
70,000 acre.
Director Bishop, that's not the max of the spillway either. That's like a reasonable number that we've spilt in, we've spilled in the last several years. So the capacity, what, at top of flood pool, John, is 65,000? You got to remind me.
Yeah.
60,000 at the top.
35,000 numbers at the current top of conservation. Have an average.
Okay. So three or four days, we can, we can dump 200,000.
Is there any public comments? Okay. Thank you. Excellent presentation. We'll move on. Consider adopting resolution 2025-05, finding that the Deguere Point Naturelike Fishway Project is within the scope of the Statewide Restoration General Order Program, EIR. Willie?
Yeah. Good morning, Board. I'm gonna, you just got dragged through some history. I'm going to drag you through a little history, not as much as that, but I am going to do that. And then we'll get on to the specific action we're asking you to take today, which is highly critical for our future relicensing and water quality certification efforts. But before I do that, I want to thank Marty and Rob for traveling here today for this presentation. Both of these guys are, you know, professionals in their, in their profession, top of their game. And I mean, you don't know it, but Marty coined the rating scale of atmospheric rivers. Marty, I think you, you said something like in your presentation, atmospheric rivers?
Here it left, Willie.
There we go.
Send him an email.
All right. Something about how they're the most easy to predict. And I wanted to let you know that if we do end up building the arc spillway, having the, the software, the prediction, the water control manual will ensure that that investment, that we get the most out of that investment. And that's the point that I wanted to make there. You got the folks that are at the top of their game doing that. So with that, I'll get into a little summary of what we've got going on here in a partnership and collaboration with CDFW and NIMSS. For years, this agency has been trying to work with the Army Corps of Engineers to improve fish passage at Deguere Dam. Deguere Dam is 21 feet tall. It's about seven miles upstream from the confluence of the Yuba and the Feather. It was built for holding back hydraulic sediment debris. Somewhere in the 1950s, the fish ladders were improved to the condition they're in today. Although they exist and they function, they don't necessarily function to the standards the species need and they're not to today's NIMSS standards. We invest heavily in flows in the Lower Yuba River for temperature and habitat. And in order to get the most out of our investment of water, an efficient and effective fish passage program and facilities at Deguere is in our best interest. For many years, over a decade, we worked with the Army Corps on an ecosystem restoration study that we thought would result in, and our intention was for it to result in improved construction or improved design of those facilities. And we would implement in partnership with the Army Corps those improvements. That was not the result of that study. We received that study in the fall of 2019 and we let the Army Corps know in the summer of 2020 that we weren't interested in moving forward with it because it did not include one improvement to those fish ladders. It was just simply habitat projects along the Lower Yuba River. In addition to that, in 2016, we signed the term sheet for the Yuba Salmon Partnership. The Yuba Salmon Partnership was a fish passage program to the North Yuba River above New Bullards Bar, where we significantly invest in facilities in the North Yuba to capture juvenile salmon as they come down after they hatch and manage those species, or those fish in the Lower Yuba River out to the ocean and back. Unfortunately, that was an ambitious design and we worked with NIMSS, CDFW and other NGOs on what it would take to implement such a reintroduction effort in the North Yuba. And the cost was preventative. I think our commitment was $100 million and the estimated cost was over $750 million. And we gained no additional partners. So we went back to the drawing board and that brings me to where we are today. We were back at the drawing board and I was in meetings with NIMSS and CDFW talking about a lower cost version of the Yuba Salmon Partnership and how we could make that happen and how we could design it such that it could be managed in partnership amongst the three of us in a way that was effective, but it wasn't so daunting from a financial perspective. That turned us into talking about other issues with salmon on the Lower Yuba River and specifically Deguere Dam and improvements that we, that could be made there. The dialogue turned to not only salmon and steelhead passage, but also green sturgeon. At the time, this was 2021, at the time, the green sturgeon had just been listed, Threatener and Dangers, I don't know, one of the two. And we had to accommodate, or it would be beneficial to accommodate for passage of the green sturgeon. Green sturgeon couldn't utilize fish ladders or wouldn't normally utilize fish ladders because they don't jump. So our team went to the drawing, back to the drawing board and came up with the concept of the Naturelike Fishway. I presented the Naturelike Fishway to you. We've had the governor of the state of California standing out on the banks of the Yuba, talking about the Naturelike Fishway and the benefits. And today, we're here to ask you to adopt the SEQA under a programmatic environmental impact report called the Statewide Restoration General Order with a major attachment called an addendum. Lots of detailed science there. And also authorize me to execute the agreement once it's finalized. There's a, the agreement in substantial form was attached to the agenda. We're still ironing out some minor details related to that agreement. And today, you'll also likely hear from, well, you've received written comments. And today you'll also likely hear from well, you've received written comments from sport fishermen that that operate on the upper part of the Lower Yuba River. Just think about it around the Highway 20 bridge and upstream from there and all over that that section of river. They get their livelihoods from this. I've heard from them specifically, I've talked to them specifically. They have some concern about predator species making their way up to the upper part of the Lower Yuba River and impacting their sport fisheries. Their concerns are valid, their concerns will be heard. We've been working with CDFW and NIMPs for a few months now on scheduling public meetings where these folks could attend and have a dialogue about what their concerns are and how they might be mitigated. But I'll remind you that Yuba Water Agency is a dam water supply flood control operator in the Yuba River. We're not a regulatory entity. The way we have split up this partnership is such that Yuba Water Agency will take on the construction of the nature like fishway and long term operation and maintenance. That's what we do. We own dams, we operate conveyance, we operate valves and gates and fish screens. CDFW and NIMPs are the policy creators or the or the folks that manage the policy. And while we totally understand the concerns of the the sport fishermen, we also will work with our partners, CDFW and NIMPs, and come up with the best policy to ensure that we don't impact their their sport fishing livelihood significantly. So I I hope that they're here today to come make comment. I think you do need to hear these comments and we need to to hear them out. Lastly, I'll talk about the water supply side of this project. Again, for many years, we've been working on major efforts here at the agency. You saw a bunch of flood control and FERO stuff. I just talked about fish passage at the at Deguere Dam. There's also a new fish screen for our south diversion proposed as part of the nature like fishway. Currently, we have a rock gavien screen on the south side of the river, just upstream of Deguere. We've been working for over a decade on design of a new screen there that meets National Marine Fisheries Service requirements. We kind of paused that initial effort that had been ongoing when we started dreaming up the nature like fishway, figuring we would include that fish screen in the nature like fishway. And that's what we've done. We'll use a very common design because it's going to be protected from the main channel of the Yuba. It'll be in the nature like fishway and therefore you can use a flat screen design. Flat screen designs are used all over the West, all over the world, really, but in the West, they're very common. As opposed to what we were having to design if we located the fish screen at the current rock gavien location, which is not as well protected from the Yuba River. So let's talk about overall costs here. We'll break it up into two pieces. The nature like fishway will cost, let's say, somewhere around 75 million dollars. CDFW has committed $30 million of that cost for a construction of the nature like fishway. We have an executed grant agreement with them for that amount. That will go to specifically the construction of the nature like fishway. Yuba Water Agency proposes to participate in the 44 and a half million dollar, let's just call it a $50 million not to exceed amount, getting somewhere between 75 and 80 million dollars. That's the current estimated cost of the nature like fishway and fish screen. I'll be clear on that is both the nature like fishway and the fish screen at that price. As far as the reintroduction program upstream of New Bullards Bar, CDFW and NIMPs will will manage that. As I said earlier, Yuba Water Agency will construct, own and operate the nature like fishway. CDFW and NIMPs will be kind of the program managers of the reintroduction program. Will assist in that. Will assist primarily financially. So our commitment to that effort will be $750,000 a year for the life of our FERC license. So anywhere between 30 and 50 years. However, if our portion of the nature like fishway exceeds $50 million, our annual contribution to the upstream reintroduction program decreases from 750,000 to 500,000 annually. But there's a little bit of a buffer there for us in case the costs of the nature like fishway exceed our current estimates. With all that, I'll just remind you that this is a a major step in both fish passage in the Lower Yuba and getting the most out of our water that we invest in the river and also solidifies our irrigators' ability to divert water in the south part of the county and maintain agriculture irrigation, which is a major driver in our economy, and also help maintain the groundwater in the south part of the county, which is the most significantly growing part of the county. And we'll ensure that that part of the basin is maintained in a sustainable way. With all that, I'll remind you that we're asking you to adopt the SEQA today and also authorize me to execute the agreement when it's ready. I mentioned the meetings that we will be having with CDFW, NIMPs and the sport fishing community. I expect that I would not enter into this agreement or execute this agreement until we've had those meetings and we've come to some resolution with NIMPs and CDFW on the issues present. But with that, I'll stop and see if there's any questions.
So thank you. I do have a question and I know I know the answer, but I always want to hear it for the record. In no way, shape or form, the South County farmers will be without water during the construction of this, correct?
It could be. That's not the plan currently. I I've communicated this project to the South County member units. They understand what's currently proposed. Every hydrology year is different. The start of construction is there's a standard start of construction, which is kind of a fall start of construction where you kick things off out there, get prepared. And then you get into the heavy excavation and the following construction year, let's call it spring through summer. However, we know how things go with permitting and agreements and funding and all that. We may have some odd start date where we want to sit down with our member units and talk about ways that we might have to convey water to them in a unique way, where they may be used groundwater for a certain portion of an irrigation season. Of course, we wouldn't intentionally keep them from irrigating. And anything we did during the construction management phase, we would talk to them about and minimize the impacts as best possible. But the member units, when I talk to them, they understand the long term benefit to the county and their water supply by constructing the nature like fishway and their fish diversion screen. So they know that there's going to be investments financially and operationally by Yuba Water Agency long term. And there might be a minor investment to them and an impact to their water supply for a period of a irrigation season or maybe even a full irrigation season. We've discussed that with them. So I wouldn't go as black and white definitive as there will not be a water supply impact to them. There may be, but it will not it will not be undisclosed. It will be discussed and it will be managed accordingly with the least possible impact, with the best possible outcome with the timing of, you know, construction and commissioning of the the fish screen itself.
So their fish screen is not far enough upstream that we could use that until this is done?
That's currently the plan. However, there's some overlap in in excavation, there's some overlap in lay down areas and there's some overlap in timing of the season and, you know, major max diversions needed at the beginning of a season when everyone wants to to water up. It might be that the impact is just for a couple of weeks at that time of year where we have to stage people watering up versus just everyone kind of gets water when they when they call. So there's some of those nuances that we'll be able to manage, but they may be impacted.
Good, Charlie.
You're also the people on the north depend on the level of Deguere Point to make their diversion. And I know you have some different ideas about how to keep the level at the present elevation and still have the fishway. Or could you also assure the north people that the design will be such that it won't lower the pool that Deguere Point primarily gives so that our maximum diversion won't go down?
Yeah, that's an excellent question, Director Matthews. We that was a major issue that we brought up internally before we even kind of had the design basis for the nature like fishway. And we got the as-built drawings of the north diversion. We looked at the elevation of the invert of that diversion facility itself and the gate. And also I've learned a little bit about the actual water flow through that conveyance system. But based on the engineering drawing and the designs of the nature like fishway, you'll still be able to get max flow diversion out of that north diversion even after construction of the nature like fishway and after the the normal, let's say, summertime elevation of Deguere that will result from the construction of nature like fishway. Let's call it four to six inches below the crest of Deguere is what the the normal routine operating elevation of Deguere will be through the irrigation season. You'll still be able to get your max diversion out of the the North Hallwood Cordoba diversion.
Because presently, we can't get our maximum diversion if we even get to the top of the dam. You're saying you're going to operate it below the top.
That that's news to me that you you can't get max diversion at the the crest of Deguere. I would look at some other impacts that could be potentially causing that. But I will bring up that we will also have the ability to use flashboards on Deguere as well. I believe Hallwood Irrigation Company currently has an agreement with the Army Corps and NIMPs on installation of flashboards. Flashboards would allow us to raise the elevation of Deguere by 10 inches. If that was necessary, we could do that. I'll just also note that we included flashboards in our proposal so we could also direct any flow above the normal flow of the nature like fishway to either side of Deguere or the center of Deguere. So for example, if we were finding there was some type of diversion impact for whatever reason at the north diversion, we could install flashboards and also let the the water that does spill at Deguere spill over towards the north diversion.
I'd also like to point out the agreements with Cordoba and the Corps, not with Hallwood and the Corps installing flashboards.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The chair. This is contingent upon favorable water permit, right?
Yeah, so I mentioned this is a major milestone for us in our relicensing process that includes this agreement and project, the Yuba River Resilience Initiative, which will be which is considered an off license agreement at FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. It will be provided to them so they are aware of the the project in our watershed. But most importantly, it will relate to our 401 water quality certification that we receive for our FERC license. And it will be contingent on receiving a 401 water quality cert that is reasonable and that we would accept. So that is a major factor in the decision to move forward. And the the agreement currently allows for that condition to play out.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm it.
Any other comments? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this?
Before we go to the comments, could you update us on the objection you put on the table for us before we came to the meeting this morning about the fly fishermen?
Yeah, so that's those are the sport fishermen I was mentioning earlier in my presentation. Again, I've talked to some of them in person. I think they have valid questions and concerns. They many of them make a living fishing on the upper part of the Lower Yuba River. We we have been attempting to schedule public meetings both in Sacramento and in Nevada City over the past several months. I believe those are tentatively on the book for late in February and the first or second week in March. There have been many scheduling conflicts. I think the sport fishermen would agree that we've had trouble finding a date. It's not because we don't intend to meet with them and hear their their questions and comments. It's because we want to make sure that they can all attend and we hear them all. And that's why we've had to juggle this. But their their comments and concerns will be heard and I will work with CDFW and NIMPs. NIMPs, again, the regulatory agencies, both from the federal and state, and assure that we we listen to them, we hear them, and we propose measures that will alleviate these concerns.
All right, a comment.
Thank you very much. I'm Scott Berry. I'm with the Gold Country Fly Fishers in Grass Valley. We talked to Willie, some of our members from the conservation group. We're just asking that you do delay this vote if you can because we have set up meetings or we've been trying to set up meetings since April of last year. And we'd like to have those meetings that have the concerns of the guides, the fishermen and everything on the river. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Thanks for the opportunity to comment. My name is Peter Burns. I live in Grass Valley. I'm part of the Gold Country Fly Fishers also. Just I think they heard some very encouraging words here from Willie today, which is great. I think a little more explanation on how the process would work to include in writing, in the plan, some form of mitigation, monitoring, that sort of thing that might come out of these meetings to alleviate the risk, frankly, of predation that we're so concerned about. So I we would like you to delay the vote. As you know, we just all saw this stuff late last week and at the weekend reading and so forth. But it doesn't appear that there's anything actually in writing that says we're going to do something about this at least monitor it, if not. But that's that's really the concern. So maybe you can help us understand how that would work if you voted today, how we would come back and include something.
Is there any you want me to take more? I'll take the rest. Is there any other public comment?
We we do have a virtual public comment.
Be ready on be ready on the shut them off button. We got we got hacked last week.
It's a no.
Okay.
Aaron, can you unmute now?
Yeah.
We can hear you, Aaron.
Perfect. My name is Aaron Zellerman. I'm the executive director for Circle, the South Yuba River Citizens League. And I wanted to comment that I appreciate the need on behalf of YWA to kind of take this procedural vote so that permitting can continue and future actions can be taken as Yuba Water, CDFW and NOAA Fisheries are deemed deemed that appropriate. But also along with Gold Country Fly Fishers, want to encourage this board to make sure that there is robust discussion, analysis and mitigation plans, action plans to address any issues that may arise from the nature like fishway, including upstream movement of striper or other non-native species. And so, you know, the plans and the monitoring are important, but making sure that there are written, you know, strategies for mitigating those risks or mitigating those threats should they arrive is also important. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question?
Chair.
Since the nature like fishway is one of the chips or pieces of getting the Water Resource Control Board and National Marine Fisheries to get our license, I think our license is the most important issue to our board. And I would not want to delay what we're doing today if that was going to delay getting the these last two agencies to get our license. Could the manager explorer explorer to force those those comments?
All right, I got two primary questions here that we'll address. We'll go with Peter's question that's kind of supplemented by Aaron's comment and I guess his comment. And then I'll get Director Matthews' question. So first off, Peter asked for something in writing. And what assurance do the sport fishermen have that their concerns about predation of their sport fishery is protected? I'm just going to remind all of us, both our board, staff and the public or the concerned fishermen, that Yuba Water Agency is going to own and operate and maintain the nature like fishway. That's what we do. NIMPs and CDFW are the regulatory authority. They're the ones that determine that, yes, Yuba Water Agency's proposal for fish passage at Deguere will benefit the endangered, let's call it Chinook salmon, amongst others, including green sturgeon. It's they've concluded it's beneficial to implement this project at Deguere for those those species. There will be changes in the Lower Yuba River. Hopefully, all positive changes here because we have unrestricted fish passage at Deguere for all of these species and we have a new state of the art fish screen. That's what Yuba Water Agency will bring to the table. NIMPs and CDFW will bring the policy to the table. One reason I haven't put anything in writing is that I need to work with NIMPs and CDFW on what policy they choose to implement and how they choose to help alleviate. on what policy they choose to implement and how they choose to um help alleviate these concerns. We will be there with them. We will be listening to uh the concerns. We'll be helping develop any mitigation measures needed if necessary. We're committed to that. This is a partnership. This is a collaboration. This is, this is a new way of doing things with our two primary federal and state uh regulators. I'm confident we can get through this. Um, at some point, there may be something in writing that uh specifies a monitoring plan or a mitigation plan. That's to be developed. Um, and I think that's evidenced by the months of, um, I I hate to say it, just scheduling emails back and forth with all of these folks. Um, and what I think we need to do is sit down in a room and talk about these things and what our options are. Uh, we haven't done that yet. It's not because of a lack of intent or a lack of transparency. It's just literally a lack of finding a date and a time to sit down and talk. So, I think that commitment is there, and um and I'll stick with it. Uh, and I think that's proven in just getting to the point we're at right now um with all of this Sequo work and all this design work. We're all committed, all of us, CDFW, NIMPs, and Yuba Water Agency are committed to uh the appropriate design, construction, and implementation of this project. Peter? That help? All right, thank you. Um, okay, now we'll get to Director Matthews' question. Um, Director Matthews, you talked about how um this overall initiative, the Yuba River Resilience Initiative, both the uh nature-like fishway and the uh reintroduction um process we'll go through with NIMPs and CDFW in the North Yuba River above New Bullard's Bar, um is a uh piece of our um relicensing effort. That is um absolutely correct. Um, what I want um everyone to understand is uh what we did with the water quality certification that we received in 2020 is we sat down, there were 50 measures in that water quality certification we received from the state uh board, State Water Resources Control Board. Um, as we all know, um, we objected to that uh version of the water quality cert. Um, and we went through the the appropriate uh challenge um there, and that was set aside by the state board, thankfully, last September. So now we can move forward with what we have today. Well, the best and most efficient way we thought to move forward was to sit down with our fish experts, both CDFW and NIMPs on, you know, in the watershed, and say, look, here's 50 conditions. What would be the best thing we could do under these conditions for the species? There are five conditions that we struggled with accepting. Those are, five are related, a lot are related to um habitat for the species in the watershed. And we worked with NIMPs and CDFW to come up with actionable measures in our Yuba River Resilience Agreement to implement, to um to fill in both the concern we had of those those five measures, but also put something on paper that would actually happen in the watershed to benefit the species. So, so that's what we went through. That's, I believe, why CDFW and NIMPs propose to uh enter into this agreement with us in collaboration and support a draft water quality certification that we have uh provided to the State Water Resources Control Board. It's a unique situation. This is not how um, you know, most 401 water quality certifications are um are developed. Um, I think this process would be wonderful if we could all all go through it, but um I think it's it's viable. I think it's justifiable. And I think when you have the regulators in your agreement, CDFW and NIMPs, it's helpful to show that you're doing something good for the species. So I, you as a board can know, when you do adopt this, um, you are doing something good for the species, but you're also getting the most you can out of the uh the water that you're providing in the Lower Yuba River. I will go on to add that I appreciate um Aaron Zettler-Mann's comment about um, he appreciates the timing of the need to approve this today, so we can move forward with permitting. Um, the $30 million grant we received from CDFW is got kind of a time expiration um with it. Uh, the calendar year 2026 is when the money needs to be spent. Um, doesn't mean that the project needs to be completed by then. We just need to um invest that $30 million in the nature-like fishway. So, that's why we're here today, to um to get the SEQUA adopted and to get authority to execute the agreement when it's ready. Um, secondly, the Army Corps of Engineers, we need to go through a 404 certification process. Um, with them, a little over a year ago, they asked us to go ahead and submit our project description and application for a 404 permit. They knew our time um issue and how time was critical. Um, they thought they maybe could approve it or at least get us through the 404 process a year ago, but because we were only at, let's just call it 5% to 10% design, they kicked it back to us and said, look, put some meat on the bones of this thing, get it to us, get it to 30% design and get it back to us, and we'll process it. Um, and they also said, show us that this is real. Show us that this is going to move forward. In in essence, is this partnership true? I think by by authorizing me to execute the agreement when it's ready is that message, that this board supports the financial investment. It also supports the the words written on the page in the agreement, and I can take that plus 30% design of the Army Corps and say, okay, we're there. Let's move the 404 uh forward. We can't start construction without um both um the SEQUA adopted, a 401 cert from the state board, and a 404 and uh, it's called related agreements with the Army Corps. Uh, so this will allow us to move forward with the 404 stuff. A lot more detail than you wanted, uh Director Matthews, but there you go.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve the item on the agenda.
All right. Let me see if there's any other comments. If there is good. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. You want to make one more comment?
Peter Burns, yeah. Um, just wondering, I I do understand the time problem. We've all been watching the FERC license and want to get that thing to happen, so totally appreciate that. Um, thinking while I'm listening, um, I know you guys probably don't like to do this, but I I do believe it could be done. Uh, to put together a very brief, simple statement, board, I understand Willie has to maintain working relationships with all these agencies and so forth, but um the board could sort of shove the ball towards NIMPs and CDFW and say, work with these guys, uh, pay attention to this thing, and make sure that bad things don't happen as a result of what we're all trying to do and improving things. So, just put that on the table as maybe a follow-up once you vote. Um, if you could cobble together a quick resolution, um, asking CDFW and NIMPs to uh come up with a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that possible for us to put in a letter to CDFW and NIMPs to hear the fishermen out?
Well, I'm gonna defer to Andrew here in a second, but I'll just tell you that that's our intent. I mean, our intent is, that's why we're scheduling these meetings. Our intent is to sit down with these folks and and hear their concerns and and work on uh, you know, potential solutions. Um, whether or not that needs to be in a resolution from this board, that's what I would question. Um, I I think that we show by our history of managing everything we do in the in the Yuba River that that goes from the forest health stuff to the Yuba Accord and to this collaborative um process. I I don't know that we need to be directed by uh, you know, some board action to go operate the right way.
All right. So I will tell you, uh, Peter, I've had several calls on this and referred people that, you know, we are not the regulators. We're we're building what they're having us build, and that you guys should go directly to NIMPs and CDFW and and work with them to come up with something that'll work for everybody. So with that, I'll go ahead and call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, thank you. Um, next item. Consider approval of 50% cost share, amount of $129,000 for Lomarica Road Crossing for Brown's Valley Irrigation District. Kyle.
Thank you, board. Uh, this uh in, this for a BVID and then the next uh action for CID. It's a 50% cost share uh for culvert crossings in four locations between the two entities. Just wanted to point out uh the collaboration that went into this between the county, CID, and BVID. Uh, it's a really neat circumstance that we've had with the uh, with the three entities coming together on this. The county informed uh the irrigation districts to work, the irrigation districts worked with the county uh and ended up saving potentially around $1.6 million uh by coordinating uh these construction projects. So, pretty cool. So, uh, number six and seven, I don't know if we want to approve them together or separately, but they need to be separate. Uh, so six is for BVID's portion, uh, was $129,000.
All right, are there any questions of the board? Any questions from the public? I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve 50% cost share in the amount of $129,000 for Lomarica Road Crossing for Brown's Valley Irrigation District.
All second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kelly.
Um, I just want to say thank you. So, Kelly McDonald, General Manager, Brown's Valley Irrigation District, and just wanted to say thank you for hearing this item out and now for approving it.
Thanks for coming, Kelly. Okay, item seven, consider approval of 50% cost share in the amount of $300,000, Lomarica Road Main Crossing for Cordula Irrigation District. Kyle.
So, this is uh Cordula's uh portion of the same project.
So moved.
Second. Any public comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Thanks. Um, item eight, consider recommending approval of 50% cost share in the amount of $356,594.15 for Cordula-Hallwood Main Canal diversion automation structure. Kyle.
So, this 50% cost share uh grant is, Cordula and Hallwood have some immediate needs to to get done this year. Um, on the on the main canal, this would help get, uh, replace some infrastructure, some some culverts and also headgates uh that will also be made in preparation for a Watersmart grant that they were um approved for, that their Cordula is working on right now. So this will help uh move that forward in the future and also prepare them for this irrigation season in a timely manner.
So moved.
To the chair.
Yeah.
Uh, could you explain where the other 50% where it was, where it's gonna come from?
Cordula.
From Cordula itself?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any public comment on this one? Okay, Andy made a motion. Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. The moment we've all been waiting for, managers' report.
Well, thank you, Chairman Messick. I know it's super entertaining here. Um, well, here's the deal. We're encroached in the flood space. A few weeks ago, I talked about the storms that were coming up and how we managed the flood space and all that. And now I'll let you know that we we stopped spill yesterday. We are encroached in the flood space, but based on, I think, what you saw today was an example of great relationships that we have with our flood partners. Um, John's worked with the Army Corps to let it, to allow us to generate out of the flood space versus spill out of the flood space. Um, so we'll keep monitoring the weather, but there's nothing in the foreseeable future, significant, no significant storms in the foreseeable future. So, uh, we're going to generate out of the flood space and get down below the uh the flood pool in the next several weeks. So, we managed to get through the storms well. Uh, we had some minor rock slides and, you know, road type maintenance. Uh, the crew was busy, um, but they got through it, and uh and here we are. I do want to let you know that um currently, all of our generating units are online and um managing um uh full load primarily. Um, that's what you do with this kind of hydrology. But we did have an issue with the Narrows Two unit. I think it was in the middle of the night between Thursday and Friday. Uh, we had the unit trip on high um bearing oil level, and the crew on Friday uh investigated it and found that the coolers, consider these like uh the radiator in your car, um, had developed a leak and leaked uh water into the oil reservoir of the bearing tub and caused the high um bearing alarm. The unit tripped offline. It all shut down safely and appropriately, but it was about a two-day outage. We did, we got the unit restored on Saturday. Um, we just uh found and repaired the the leak in the coolers. Um, we'll develop a a longer-term repair plan for those coolers. I'm sure Keon already has something cooked up, but I did want to let you know we lost about two days of generation due to this issue. I want to thank the crew for working on a Friday and Saturday and getting the unit back as quickly as possible. The generation or or energy market is pretty good right now, and um it's nice to have the full, you know, currently, we're putting about 53 megawatts through that unit. So it's helpful to have that back uh on a Saturday afternoon. So that was a significant event. I uh went to a meeting uh up in Grass Valley on Friday, and I passed a bunch of trucks going up on a Friday, and I'm thinking, oh, this is, I I'd heard about the situation. I saw a bunch of our trucks going up the hill. I said, oh, this is a little more than uh just a unit tripping offline. So that was good. Thanks, uh, team, for getting it back together. I think I can skip a lot of the details in here, but I will get us to the uh the HR update. Um, well, there's a lot of detail there on our um other uh jobs uh that have been posted out there and our interviews and and offers we're making. I know that we uh made an offer to an electrical engineer, and he accepted it. That's the big news since the last board meeting. I'll go ahead and read the kind of summary here, then I'll get into communications. Uh, human resources staff continues to make forward progress on the class and comp study and intends to bring updated job descriptions and compensation information to the board this summer. And as uh best practice, staff has reviewed the agency's HR policies to ensure compliance with new laws and updated practices. The staff will bring the updates to the ABP Committee on March 4th. The HR team continues to provide HR trainings and informational topics to Yuba Water staff on a quarterly basis. And in January, we discussed her's retirement, and in March, we'll discuss uh leaves of absences. On the communication side, last week, the Sacramento Bee featured a great story about the Atmospheric River Research Partnership with Scripps and the implementation of FERO. Uh, I don't know if you guys saw it. The article in the Bee was was really good. Um, North State Public Radio picked up that story as well, and it sparked coverage from CBS 13, which also turned out great. Comstock's magazine gave us a shout out in a story about Atmospheric River Research and flooding in the Central Valley as well. On the community relations side, Aaron Esselman, thanks, Aaron, spoke to a group of eighth graders at our bogus school about what it's like to be an engineer. In sponsorships, we're sponsoring the Trauma Intervention Program Dinner on Saturday, the Baqai Festival coming up next weekend, and we'll have a team walking in the parade. And for the first time, two of our employees, Dee Dee Cordell and Joe Davis, are, uh, will actually be announcing the parade as well. Uh, our next meeting is March 4th. We'll have a regular board meeting and an ABP meeting. That's it.
All right. I'll start on this end today. Wayne?
Uh, nothing other than, um, I've never been as happy to sit through a long meeting and and just learn more about really, really important projects that we're doing and and our ability to work with other agencies and 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 people too. We, you know, those guys that were here, I think, knew that we heard them and and uh we care about the same things they do. And it's just great to be part of an agency that's doing big things.
Charlie?
Uh, I would like to um mention that uh both the manager and staff have accomplished more that you heard today than you think about it, because uh when the control manual at Orville, they were able to uh use the anticipated storms or lack thereof to go into the flood pool. And um Willie and his team have worked with the uh uh powers-to-be to encroach that same idea that we can look at the uh storms coming and encroach into the flood pool, which is uh a very good both financial and water use, because when you can uh let the water out a little bit lower, obviously, we make more generating capacity. But more importantly, he is uh in interjecting this in such a way that you saw that that we in dry years can uh encroach into the pool, uh hopefully with the newer flood manual he's putting out. So it gives us the ability to uh have water in dry years more than we would have if we had the old manual. So, uh, I just really wanted to let everyone know that uh the flood control manual might not seem much to people of the flood control, but the financial benefits to the agency are uh significant.
Gary?
The NACWA board recently approved uh some priorities to focus on for the next five years, and I had Mandy uh send those out to the board, so you can check them out. Have a NACWA Executive Committee meeting tomorrow, and I will miss our next uh water agency board meeting, as I'll be at the NACWA conference.
Andy?
I'm gonna take the Colorado tour for, on the 12th through the 14th.
Renick?
I just want to say thanks to the staff for all they're doing for flood control. Appreciate that. Uh, been through the 86 and Appreciate that. Uh, been through the 86 and 97 floods, so I definitely have some perspective on that. And I want to say thanks to whoever's going to the Marysville meeting later this week. Um, I won't be able to attend because I'm teaching at that time, but uh appreciate you moving uh the ball forward and helping where you can.
Nothing. Okay. So, I only have one item I'd like to talk about. The 4H Color Me 5K run on March 15th up at the UC Field Station. I'd like to challenge the Yuba Water Agency employees to all participate. I will lead you through the start line, and because I appreciate all of our employees, I will make sure I come in last, cross the finish line, let you guys all go. So, is there any way we could put a challenge out to our employees to participate in this 5K?
You just did.
Okay. But I mean, you get it out there more than-
Yeah, we'll do that. Get it, get us the details, get us the manual.
Okay. And that goes for North Yuba Water District and Brown's Valley Irrigation District as well, since you're here. So-
Can I drive?
Can you drive? No, but you can stand there and throw green chalk on everybody as they cross the finish line. So, um, Rennick might have more details on it than I do. I just saw him on there, so, but I guess we're rested.
It's a huge community event. It's probably the biggest event for 4H for the year. Um, it's up at the the rec up in, up in your neck of the woods in the watershed, and the uh kids really enjoy it, and it it gives them an opportunity to create some funding for additional uh resources and things like that. And so, it'd just be great to have everybody there.
Yes.
You running?
I'll fast walk, slow run. I'll go stride to stride with you again, Willie.
I heard that. You're not gonna go on the radio and say that again, are you?
I might. Okay. Uh, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.